Now it's nine.
First item, I think that's just Councilor McGregor, you have met the five-year criteria through your council and here is your award pin. Congratulations. Okay, adoption of the agenda. It resolved as agenda for the July 21st, 2023 meeting to accept this presented with the addition of drainage improvements on commercial and mill streets. And improved order forms for waste transfer station water treatment plant under general business industrial control, thus control under the in camera session of council. So please move it. Counselor General, Secretary, Counselor McDonald, all in favor. Be resolved at the minutes of the June 16th, 2023, great medium council be hereby approved as cert满了. Counselor Fisher moves it. Secretary Hatch, discussions, any errors or omissions? All in favor. Okay, under finance, the general account being resolved at the July 11th, 2023, general account payable, being checks number six, five, seven, five to six, five, eight, zero. And six, five, eight, two to six, six, three, nine, and the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, twenty-eight cents be hereby approved. Please move that. Second Counselor Fisher, discussion. All in favor. Be resolved at general accounts payable, checks number six, five, eight, one to Big Valley Wash, and the amount of two hundred dollars be approved. Please move that. Counselor McVay, your second counselor Jones, discussion. All in favor.
Can we ask Counselor Christian Fisher?
Be resolved at direct deposit two, seven, zero, being a payroll correction for the period May 29th to June 9th, 2023, and the amount of eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents be hereby approved. Please move that. Counselor Hatch, Secretary, Counselor McDonald, discussion. All in favor. It resolved at the direct deposit two, seven, one, being stat payable for the period June 12th, June 23rd, 2023, and the amount of fifteen thousand, nine fifty-nine and sixty-one cents be hereby approved. Please move that. Counselor Fisher, Secretary, Counselor Jones, discussion. All in favor. It resolved at direct deposit two, seven, two, being a payroll correction from the period June 12th to June 23rd, 2023, and the amount of seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-nine cents be hereby approved. Counselor McGregor has asked, who's it? Secretary, Counselor McDonald, discussion.
Who's this for, uh, Jones?
To me.
Seven, seventy-one, seventy-nine. All in favor. Be resolved at direct deposit two, seven, three, being stat payroll for the period of June 26th, 2023 to June, July 7th, 2023, and the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-nine cents be hereby approved. Please move that. Counselor McDonald, move this. Secretary, Counselor McGregor, discussion. All in favor. It resolved at direct deposit two, seven, four, being council indemnity for the month of June, 2023, and the amount of five thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-eight cents be hereby approved. Counselor McGregor moves it. Counselor McDonald, seconded, discussion. All in favor. Utility account be resolved at July 11th, 2023, utility accounts payable, being checks number one, zero, two, three to one, zero, four, eight, and the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents be hereby approved. Please move that. Counselor Hatch, Secretary, Counselor Jones, discussion. All in favor. It resolved if the statement of revenues and expenditures reports to June 30th, 2023 be received as presented. Please move that. Counselor McDonald, Secretary, Counselor Jones. All in favor. It resolved at the bank reconciliation for the month of June, 2023, be approved as previously circulated. Please move that. Counselor Fisher, Secretary, Counselor Hatch, discussion. All in favor. Okay, delegations.
We should probably do communications first in order to do the public hearing at nine thirty-two.
Oh. Go ahead.
Okay, under the order of communications, we have the age-friendly Manitoba July newsletter. There are several from the Association of Manitoba Municipalities. They are dated June the ninth, the 12th, the 15th, the 16th, June 21st, 26th, June 30th, July 10th, and July 12th. There was information from Canadian Pacific Kansas City Rail on their rail activity notification. Enbridge Pipeline has provided us with the pipeline safety and emergency information. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities has provided some community days. They are dated June the 12th, June the 19th, and June the 26th, and July the 4th. They have some information on their business entitled Halt Incorporated, which includes information on bike infrastructure. Legacy ships have provided information on wellness and work-life balance. The Manitoba Association of Watersheds have provided their summer speaker series information as well as their newsletter. Manitoba Environmental Industries Association has provided information on the Clean Tech Conference. Multi-Manitoba or Multimaterial Stewardship Manitoba provided their 2022 annual report. And the report is actually available in our office if anybody wants to see it. The municipal relations have provided a bulletin with respect to asset requirement obligations. And if you take a look at that, there are a few more things that we will have to look at internally to meet requirements. Municipal Relations also provided a bulletin for waived fees for private well and system testing. Sustainable Building Manitoba provided information on building codes and energy efficiency. There were thank you letters received from STARS as well as from the Wauwuneeza School. And there is a letter from Pat Warburton related to development processes.
Okay. Be resolved at the above noted communications be received. Please move that. Counselor McDonald, Secretary, Counselor Jones, discussion. All in favor.
Yes, I think we could.
Okay, well, news committee reports, uh, start with zone, uh, self zone, board three, Counselor Fisher, you have written reports to add to it.
Basically, I took it upon myself to drive every road that is in my board. And then I drove additional roads in other municipalities. We're not in that bad a shape, so there definitely is a couple of trouble spots, but oh my God, some of them in other municipalities are quite far worse. We have this problem of people trying to bypass the scales and they're pounding some of our roads to scrap. And I don't know how we can stop it unless we put Craig out there with the big stick, so.
Yeah, sure. Anything further?
No, you know.
Counselor Jones, you had.
No.
Board two, Counselor Hatch, you have written report, anything to add to it?
I have filed a report. I wanted to add that I think we need to revisit the shingles at the transfer station. What we're accepting and when we're accepting it and who's bringing them.
Okay, so we set that up for the transportation committee meeting.
Okay, do transportation committee or are you wanting something on the next council meeting?
Next council meeting, sorry.
Anything further? We're going, Counselor McDonald, you have a report, anything to add?
Uh, Mr. Turner, just got that, like Mr. Fisher, I've been on quite a few roads in our municipality and in additional ones around us. And ours are, I think with our new blades, we bought, they're really working, taking washboard out and, and working well. And some of the others probably's got some very big frost wheels yet that aren't tightening up where I see ours are starting to, so I think it's, our guys are doing great calls, but it's not a true.
Counselor McVay, you have a written report, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Or is there nothing to add? Do you have a report, anything to add here?
No, you don't need to add.
And this officer, anything to add here? Public work report, anything to add to that? The parent chief report. That's it for reports. It be resolved that the verbal and written reports be received. Please move that. Counselor Jones, Secretary, Counselor Fisher, discussion. All in favor.
Public hearings, yeah, this is, that has to happen at 9:15. We'll do the first resolution slowly.
Okay, be resolved that regular meeting council be recessed to allow council to hold public hearings, receive representations from any person who wish to make them in respect to conditional use application. Please move that. Counselor Fisher, second, Counselor Jones, rather, Secretary, Counselor McDonald, all in favor.
Okay, I'll speak slowly, so we'll use up a minute or two. Under the order of public hearings, we have a conditional use application that is to allow for the storage of recreational vehicles. This is in a limited zone. The applicant is in attendance if council should have any questions for him. I will let you know that there have been no calls to the office and no written communications received on it. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this public hearing?
I just might have a comment, but it's.
You're welcome to come forward to the delegation table.
What's your name and?
It's Patricia Warburton. I guess the only questions I have as because of the AL status, usually that's not commercial. But I know conditional uses can be applied for that, and I understand that. I don't live in that area, so it doesn't apply to me, but the concerns that I do have that can present is that right now we know that other storage zones, this does say for trailers, but yet in the application, it does indicate growth of other containments or otherwise. With that being said, we know that people work from home now. They need to expand their businesses and will work out of these containers as well. With that also comes other issues. Hobbyists, businesses, vehicle buffs, that kind of thing can be appreciated, but if the community is willing to tolerate, that's fine. Is it eco-friendly? Will there be bins for recycle? Present at that lot for people to put their wares into that they no longer wish to use. That could be the benefit of municipality or the benefit of the owner for recycling purposes. So I understand it's just not RVs, which is how it's stated in the papers here. But I think that the note should reflect that for expansion for this individual. And that's all I have for comments. Just some food for fun. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and address any of those comments?
Sure, I didn't write all the questions down, but. My name is David Peters. So remind me if I forget anything here, but it is supposed to start out with. I will be fencing the property regardless of what happens with the conditional use. And we will be starting off with campers, boats, any type of trailers like that. There is one CCAN on property currently right now, and that's kind of for my own storage. It is going to have cameras and security system on it. I had not thought of the garbage disposal, but if it is something that we like, it is a cost to, to myself to have it in there. And I don't really want individuals just kind of dumping their stuff off at a location like that when they could take it into the dump that is local. It, yeah, I thought it would be something that people from my net could come and drop off some vehicles and trailers in the area, and they would also be coming into the call off and trying to get fuel or some of the other businesses in town here, so. Does that answer? Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Sure.
Yeah, unless counsel has done to show anyone.
For all representatives in regards to the conditional use application number C2/2023 to allow storage of recreational vehicles on AL agricultural limited zone located on block one, plan two, five, two, eight, BLTO located on our northeast border, twenty-three, seven, seventeen, WPM Peters have been dealt with. Therefore, be resolved at 2023, be concluded, the council resume this normal order of business. Please move that. Counselor McDonald, Secretary, Counselor Fisher, all in favor. Okay, just give me a delegation.
Delegations.
First of the delegations.
Morning.
Morning.
Don Zach Knows is my name. I know most of you here. So I'm here to discuss the water issues created by the water overflow crossing Commercial Street and flooding my property, commonly known as Two Ten Commercial Street. Now, I appeared before council last June, and I'd quickly like to just read a few lines from that, that day for new council members who weren't aware of that time. So anyway, again, this was my appearance on June the second, when there is a rain event, often water will run across the street, eroding my driveway and flooding the lot. On occasion, of a heavy rain event, it will push water onto the concrete floor of my shed as well. I've had repair driveway damage a number of times that I repaired at my own cost. And last year, the Works Department did repair the driveway twice with crushed asphalt located at the dump site. Now, again, I brought this issue to the attention of some council members in the Works Department two years ago, so three years ago from now, and told the issue would be addressed. I was told the matter had been discussed by council. Unfortunately, to date, nothing had happened. Okay, so after appearing at council meeting a year ago, the culverts across the street from me, running east and west, many of the ends were banned, so they were, they were straightened. And a culvert was opened up that flowed to the north, kind of behind Perry Line Shed. Now, that did alleviate the issue mainly when there was a small rain event. So meaning, you know, if there was a half inch or something, that those colors would handle that water. However, when, anytime there's a harder rain, that water continues to cross the road from the south side. This year, in the month of June, there have been two rains that crossed the road and flooded my lot and lots to the north of me. It has put water onto my concrete floor of my shed and eroded my driveway again. And I can no longer store anything valuable on the floor of my shed, meaning lumber, because the floor is wet, and you never know when it's going to happen. And as I say, my driveway is eroded again. Now, it was kind of interesting because it was noted last year before those small repairs were done that there is a dip on the pavement right across, right at my lane. And that, what I was told by the contractor who installed the sewer to the property across the street from me, that the, it is probably settled, and so that's where the water likes to cross. Now, there was pavement done in Wauwuneeza in the last month, and they dropped all the equipment off right across from my building, but they never put any pavement there, and that would have helped a little bit. The ditch on the south side of Commercial Street is just cannot handle that excess flow. And that water is coming from right up here on Forest Street, also on Third, all that water is flowing north. And anytime you get a, either a harder rain or a larger amount, that system can just not handle it. There's a lot of water going down there, and it just doesn't have the capacity to, to get it away. And this spring, or a month ago, so when we had those two harder rain events, I spoke to three people living on that street who witnessed it, and they said the water crossed the entire block. So not, not just at my place, but the entire block. And it was, it was just a torrent. And the one, I spoke to the one witness who said he got up at three o'clock in the morning when that event happened. And he said it was a river running through between the new fourplex beside me and my shed. And it's eroded it down there, went down the hill, and I'm sure Derek's going to address that. Now, I want to explain that that lot that I own has been in my family for approximately 40 years. My father purchased the property, built a steel building on there, and in the past, there was never, it was never issue with water there. Now, I've been born and raised and spent my whole life here, and so I experienced, you know, and seen what happened with water. I mean, I delivered grain to the elevator that was located across the street on the south side. Of course, over time, a lot of things have changed, but I think the water issue kind of changed. The railway track ran through Wauwuneeza, and that was approximately where the hall is located today. So when the hall was constructed in 1989, and I was on that building committee at that time, we were obligated to fill the ditches that were along each side of the railway. Now, the railway had deep ditches, and they were taking that water. So that water that was heading north, which is the natural flow in town, went into their ditch system, which were deep and gone away. So after that time, the town then started to direct water differently. So it's coming off a main street, it's then run east and then north. And as I say, when all that, you can imagine, these two streets and all that water heading there at the same time, it's a tremendous flow, and it, it just can't handle it. And so my father, I have any issues, but as I say, the last, I've owned the property for almost 20 now. And the last, every year, it just, it's getting worse. Now, again, there was, across the street, it was just all open lots. There was no fourplex, there was no housing there. So the more buildings you put, of course, you're going to have more roofs, you're going to have more water flowing. So the ditch is fairly adequate on the south side to control the flow coming off of those dwellings and buildings that are there as it is. Then, then we have this extra flow, and it's quite a steep ditch coming down. You know, it comes off the, I don't know, the highway there and behind the church and between the hall. And you know, it's steep, so when that water gets flowing, it's flowing quickly, so. I, I've seen that problem get worse through the years. Again, I've addressed council a number of times. If, if any repairs that have been done, as I say, they, they help, but they don't, they don't adequately address the situation. Now, I'm, I'm not a water engineer. I'm just an old guy who's seen what's happened through the years, and I think the time has come that we address this issue. I mean, it's, you can't put it off. There's, there's now a new, a new fourplex inside me, and the water's coming at it. Now, the interesting thing there was that prior to the construction, that was mostly an open lot. Many of you will know what is Herman Hydrants' Lot, and so that lot had a, a little bit of a natural flow to the east. And that, so when the water crossed the road, a lot of it would go on to that lot and move to the east, to the ditch, and then run north. Now, with the fourplex there, that can't happen because the fourplex is quite high, so that any water crossing the road, it can only move east or west. And I'm very concerned that it's going to put even extra water, and as a matter of fact, the last event, I had some who witnessed it, and they said it was just like a river running between my shed and the fourplex. And it certainly resulted in damage downhill to the north. So we, we can't allow this situation to occur. It's easy to put off and, you know, say it's an odd event, but it's not an odd event when it's happening repeatedly every year and a number of times each year. So I would urge council to take action. I think I've been extremely patient as a property owner. That, that water running up across my lot, doubting the property. I really, you know, I, I don't have answers to this, but there's got to be some answers. It's, it's got to, the weather, you know, it's deepening the ditch, maybe directing the water in several different flows. At one time, more of it ran down Forest Street toward the swimming pool. Now, I know, you know, that can create some issues a little further down, like where we used to have the old rink. It was always wet there in the spring. Not many of you will remember that, but there is a house there now, but there's also enough right away that a berm or ditch, I feel, could, could be put in there, so maybe some of this water shouldn't split off in a few directions, and maybe that would help somewhat. As I say, don't have the answers. There is people who know water and how to control it, and so maybe that's a direction council could be looking. But again, I would, I would urge them to, to address this situation. It's gone on for a long time, and I think it's, it's high time we, we did something. So thank you for your time, and hopefully you'll take this seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Zach, before you leave.
Oh. Any questions?
Correct, Mr. Zach Knowles.
There's a potential plan on our desk here, is Mr. Zach Knowles saying that?
I don't.
No, no.
No, I haven't.
To be discussed with, uh, in general business.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly provide a call. We had a little bit of direction from council as to which way they want to go. But it's not that it hasn't been looked at.
Yes, it's applicable to probably both delegations here.
Yeah, so I just wonder if we want to in the delegations have discussion with the delegates. About the plan or are we gonna allow that during the?
Well, it's what we thought, we'd hear the, the delegation and at that point when it comes to discussion on general business, we can do it with the public works. Just, you know, that's, that's her plan or the public work plan rather. Not necessarily that's what council wants to do, like just some, uh, uh, topic of discussion.
Okay, I think I, I would just like the delegates now the ability to speak to it or once we get into discuss where.
Well, yeah, once the discussion, when we can do that.
Okay, if, if there's one more thing I, I'd just like to add in that, in that, uh, that ditch where the water is heading north. And hits Commercial Street, a highly unusual situation where there's a culvert in there with a right-hand angle. Water doesn't like to make right-hand turns, no more than we do. That culvert that takes the flow to the east. Uh, has risen on the east end of that culvert in. I remember when that culvert was buried and it was mostly, there was only say three or four feet exposed on the end. Today it's probably fifteen, so I think the frost pushed it off in the air, which isn't helping the situation. You know, because it, it should have been down lower. That, uh, that's a, a bit of an issue as well, so, okay, with that. So should we stick around then?
Of course, I would suggest.
Okay, sure.
Okay, be resolved at the presentation by those acts, how to raise the flooding issues across Commercial Street, like this property BRC.
Derek Shear, shed of two oh three Park Street, just, just down from Don's property and, and directly north of the condos. So mine will be a lot shorter because I'll just say ditto to some of Don's stuff. He covered a, a lot of it with a lot more history than I can provide, so. I would add that in the past, it hasn't really affected me that much, the water coming across the street for the past twelve years that I've owned the shed. Because when it came across the street, as Don said, it had a chance to work its way east. Now with the condo being there, prior to the decks being built and the driveways being paved. It came across the street and funneled between the two condos in that two-inch range of it and I ended up with. Two and a quarter inches of water in my shed. I've had Can Cade come and, and give me a quote, the water worked its way up, the insulation on the heated side of the shed. They suggested, um, dehumidifiers and pull the insulation out. The bill would be thirty-nine hundred dollars. The side of the hill, and this isn't a, in my opinion, and again, I'm not a water engineer. I can tell you that water and manure run downhill generally. Right now, I'm trying to push the manure back up the hill to you guys, so. The, the side of the hill, the sump pumps from the, the new fourplex since, since it was built. Have been pumping out on the side of my hill. I talked to the committee members. And said that it's okay that they're pumping on the side of the hill, but I want them down over the edge of the hill into the drainage ditch along my shed. Five requests over six weeks to have those sump lines extended were never met. And on June, sometime during the week of June twelfth, the sump lines were extended right to the edge of the condo property. And dumped off directly on the mine. That's when I lost my, uh, cool. And a heated discussion with board members and chair of the building committee. On June fifteenth, the sump lines were diverted into a, uh, tile line and the weeping tile was pushed to the east ditch, which helps. I have some facts and figures on how long the sump pumps ran. And it is kind of shocking what a one, one-third horsepower pump at forty-two gallons a minute. When it runs at peak times, ran for twenty seconds a minute. That low times ran for ten seconds a minute. So if we use that ten seconds a minute. They, they put out seven gallons, which is kind of surprising. Three pumps at seven gallons is twenty-one gallons a minute. Times sixty minutes is twelve hundred and sixty gallons an hour. Times twenty-four hours is thirty thousand gallons. Times seven days a week, you're, you're over two hundred thousand gallons per week being pumped on the side of my lot. The other problem is the downspouts were never drafted to the east ditch. In fact, the downspouts were never put down. They were in the operating position since the, the condos been built. For every inch of rain that falls, you get six gallons per square foot off a roof line. That's another thirty-six thousand gallons pumped onto my, the side of my hill. No attempt at all to divert that and the only answer I got was it's under construction. Both myself and then the independent adjuster made the same comment. I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure why the, there wasn't lines put on the bottom of the, the, um, downspouts. And directed the east ditch. That's what happens in every other landscaping, construction job. But the answer I got is it was built on a hill. Which way do you think the water's gonna go? Downhill. Yeah, this was the problem, the sump lines and the, and the, and the water from the downspouts. It definitely caused the problem on the side of the hill because that water just seeps out slowly. Down and now the side of my hill is ten inches lower than it was prior to the condos going in. Did it, did it add to the problem of the water on the floor? It didn't help, that's for sure. The big part there is when it comes across the street, and it happened twice this year, once with the two-inch rain event. Once with the inch and a quarter and numerous times in the past, but in the past, it has the ability to work its way east. Now it can't go east. It hits the driveways and has to go east or west. And if it goes west, it goes on to Dawn's and then on to mine. The suggestion was made, why don't I dig a ditch on the west side of my shed, which could be done. But if I dig a ditch on the west side of my shed, there is no ditch on the north side of my yard. So it's just gonna push, push the problem on somebody else. Right now, it's, it's my problem in the shed. It's not a residence. It's not somebody's house. It was close to going on the house on the west side when it did work its way down the shed. My question to council is, who do we go to in a situation like this where a neighbor is pushing water onto? Whether it's a new build or, uh. Like there's rules in place in the egg, egg community, you can't put water under your neighbor without permission. I mean, there's people, there's death threats over that all the time. It's the same thing in town. You can't put water into your neighbor, even under new construction. Last, first rule of landscaping, we did some is, and you can drive around and see there's retaining walls, but in the water has. Has to attempt to be put to the ditches. That wasn't done in this case and I'm, I'm the one that has the bills. There was a warning made on June fifteenth that we need to fix this because the next rain event. And it, it came through the, between the two condos, there's a pile of dirt. You can drive by, I have lots of pictures. It pushed stones and dirt through the middle, off the property. There's a water line on the side of my shed that's eight inches deep. That never happened prior to this. Yes, we need to fix the drainage on the south side so that it doesn't come across the road. More importantly to me, just me personally, when it does come across the road, it used to run east and it never came into my shed. When Don ma- made the comment that they opened up a ditch on the east side behind Perry's shop. Which is now the town shop, that ditch needs to be deepened too because it just comes on to the road. Runs to the west and ends up in the east ditch or the west ditch, east of the condos and my property. And just adds the water that has to go through there. So if we're gonna divert water, we have to make sure it stays where we put it.
Basically, you're suggesting we work our way uphill and right to Commercial Street.
Well, and, I don't know, if you're being recorded on camera. I don't know where the water's going right now, where it ends up. Does everybody know where it ends up? Like where it's designed to go over the river? Or where, right before the river, where does it go? Highways yard? Does anybody see a problem with that? Huge problem there. Environmental problem. Huge environmental problem there.
There's one gate, culvert on the gate in the highway yard at the, close to the river.
Is it always closed?
I don't know, it's, but it, there's so much traffic in there from my previous experience. That you make a ditch and because of all the traffic in and out and then you get the rain events, it's hard to keep the ditch, so it is running that way.
But by design, it's going into the highway yard.
The culvert that's hot, uh, I believe, but where Perry's shop is now. That culvert coming out of that side is directed upon that side of the road, on the east side of the road, over to the river and that side only.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't. It, it comes on to the road. It needs to be deepened. So the stuff that's designed, and I'm not saying it out loud, but you guys can figure it out. Stuff, all this water that's designed to go into the highway yard is a huge problem. Because it's picking up. That lot is water all winter long and there's only, and I'm not talking just in one spot, the entire lot has no snow on it for one reason. And that's what we're putting all the water. And also that asphalt and oil and contaminants and like it. If the farmer was doing that or sugar was doing that or anyone else was doing that. There would be a big problem associated with this, just for clarification. Prior to the fourplex, no water issues.
No.
The mission one time and it backed up.
As soon, as soon as that east ditch was opened up that Don was talking about and it wasn't deepened, it came across the road. And then into the side. So the only time it's happened is when that culvert was opened up on the east side. And had a little wee bit in the one corner because it backed up. This time, well, the entire shed floor is. East half of the shed has two and a quarter inches of water on it. It's not cemented. West half of the shed is cemented within floor heat. There's a water line, I can provide pictures, but eight inches up.
Derek, I noticed you, uh, you got enough drainage from your shed to the little ditch there.
Yeah.
So basically the water was that full in that ditch?
It was eight inches up the side of the shed, so that's never happened.
West side of the road, is that why the road was, uh, approaching?
Yeah. It, it ran across my lot, uh, from the corner of the shed across, which, well, that's never happened because there's never been eight inches of water in there. And it ran, ran across the road. That culvert isn't big enough at the, not to handle everything that's coming now.
One of the problems Derek is the saturation that you're getting from the sump pumps and everything. That ground cannot take, you know, additional moisture at all.
That's why the sump lines needed to be ran over and into the drains. To this day, I, I don't know why they weren't. And, and on the week of June twelve, the sump lines were red, ran right to the edge of the property. You might as well kick in the nuts at that point, because all that was doing was making sure it wasn't on the condos and a hundred percent.
Do you have a, do you know where they're running now?
They're running into, they're running into the beets drops. As of Monday, after the last request, and they're, they ran into these solid pipes that I've been asking for since May first.
So they're not running into your property anymore?
As of Monday, they're not, no.
Do you have crops ordered with sump lines?
No, but I mean.
That's just a temporary.
That, that, that is my question. Who does the, the property owner go to? Because I had to make repeated requests, repeated requests and make enemies out of volunteers and make. But I, I still have no redirection, nothing. Because it's deemed overland flooding. The only reason there's overland flooding is because, yes, the ditch on the south side can't handle it. For twelve, thirteen years, like this wasn't a torrential rain event of two inches and an inch and a quarter. We've had those before. Now all of a sudden I have rain, water on the floor. And to Don's comment, I have five vehicles in there right now. It smell, I have a musty smell because I don't have any, I have fans running like from the rain, but. My concern is no longer that it's coming between the two condos, but it's, like Don said, it's, there's no drainage in those driveways. Nothing. They're higher than the grade that was there before. The water can't run east. It's forced east or west. So the stuff that's forced west is still coming down onto my lot. And if I just dig a ditch, like was suggested on the west side, it won't be my problem anymore. I could do that. Apparently I have liability insurance that actually covers me for that, so. Do I just dig a ditch and make it somebody else's problem? Any questions?
And I, I looked at that and I know exactly where, you know, the idea is where the water's gonna run. Uh, it, to me, it should go east and down around the lake, that's.
Yeah.
That's my opinion when I look at that.
Yeah. Do we have an answer for Mr. Shear's question about who you should go to this, like I don't. Part of this isn't within our jurisdiction. The drainage is, but. Sump lines and stuff like that, that's not really our.
That church is a symbol matter.
Right, so.
Certainly comes to symbol matter.
And then part of it is certainly within manageable building code where there are regulations as to when you're building, what you can do with your water. So conversation with the contractor to make sure that as they are completed, that they're complying with that.
Why, the answer I got back from the contractor was they are not responsible for the, the quote, they didn't.
Who was the contractor?
Making reasons, but he didn't tender on the landscaping part of it or anything, so.
So essentially, they've hit like the groundwater digging into the foundations.
There's, I think there's springs that are that long.
Which isn't, there's springs under the whole village here, basically?
Yeah. But, but on June fifteenth, when those sump lines and the. My understanding is all the weeping towels, instead of being run into the sump pits, they ran into this line and then. Additional sump lines are also ran into this line. My concern is that line that is running is about two and a half feet deep. That's not going to work in the winter time. So then are the sump lines going to be, and the landscaping still hasn't happened. I, I've asked, I know that the company that came and gave me a quote for fixing the side of my hill was one of the companies. But is there a plan for the, like who do I get answers from?
It's something between the two landlords. Derek, is there room between you and the condos to set up a berm or whatever to divert the water to the east? Like is there a back lane or whatever that should be there that's. Could have a ditch put in and drain to the east?
I don't think there's a back lane, there's not one.
Well, it's not back lane, but it's, it's your not designated area that should be municipal properties to do easily blocks.
But again, my question is who do I go to? Is it the landlord?
And I can help you the best that I can. There's some provincial regulations out there, we follow them as well, but I can always get the information that.
Well, if you're a civil beach issue, you're not referring to landlord, landlord or landlord?
Right, involving the ditches and water. And with respect to the requirements for the proper landscaping, et cetera. It would be considered me as development officer because that's part of, I guess they, they're part of the, under the building code to make sure that those are met.
But my question's to, you told me you were gonna get back to me after talking to the building committee.
I spoke to the building committee and they were doing some landscaping. They had believed that it would be completed before this council meeting. It is not. I think from looking when Chelsea and I went out. I think there is more that needs to be done than just the landscaping part. So that is part of the plan that Chelsea has drafted up and provided today to council. So if you could.
And as you can understand, it's, it's very frustrating when I ask these questions. And then somebody will get back to me and somebody will get back to me and then no one gets back to me and I'm the one with this. Problem bill. I don't see any resolution. The answer I got first time was it was going to be a committee of volunteers, a work bee that was gonna do the landscaping. I thought. The next one I got was Livingston is doing the landscaping. That is good, perfect, we hired a professional. The next version I got is the bill was too large from Livingston. Were you over budget on the build? Did you know how to count through? And and when I heard the bill, I guessed twice as high. I would have jumped that. So I don't know why we're dragging our feet and why there is no timeline, like and and I look at this agenda and think, isn't that strange that these are being discussed now that we've got a problem? Isn't it strange that it takes me getting mad at the building committee before something? Now, I mean, it was within 24 hours each time of me addressing it, getting mad. Yes, the sump lines are are fixed after I got mad. Yes, the the downs boats are now drafted at the east ditch after I put it on Saturday and said, why is this not being done? It's gonna rain Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Like, what what is the landowner supposed to do other than, he's just supposed to get mad? Like, is that the council's answer?
Well, council, you just tell the.
You're like, okay, sorry.
Council can only do so much.
The head of council and the building committee chairman are the same person?
Yes.
Is that not a conflict here?
Certainly, but what happens, there's municipal requirements and there are property property requirements, and that is there, and we don't want it to be solved out there, and that's all we're saying here is that I'm just, I'm sitting here and you're giving your presentation and we're gonna talk about that later as far as public, we're on the basis of municipality.
I believe.
Me and you, that that's outside the scope of council.
I believe that that it was said that the the water from the sump pumps, it was definitely said, the water from the sump pumps and downs boats didn't add to this problem. Yet, as as the head of council or the committee, building committee chair, you told Don that watering his lawn was saturating it and adding the problem in his shed and the problem on my lot to the north.
There there's water, again, that's building, landlord and landlord.
What were you acting upon as they, were you telling Don that as the head of council?
No, I was telling him, I was telling him as part of committee, on the building committee.
So it.
Which is a not for profit, there's a, there's no profit involved in that.
That's the problem then, him pumping water onto the side?
No, no.
Well, you told him that.
Well, it could, I mean, if water's gonna sit there, you just said yourself, you saturate the hill and causes some downstream, right?
Like, but yet you told me that it didn't cause a problem on my lot, the sump pumps and the.
No, no, I didn't say that. I've never said that. You you said that you you didn't have a problem, and again, that's outside the scope of council that I don't wanna get into that, that's up to you and I discussing the different elements.
But there's no point you and I discussing it because it's conflict of interest, you're the head of council and head of the building committee, and I'm asking, in a situation like that, who do you go to?
Right, and that's what I expect this, thank you, there's a, there's a civil, this is a civil matter between property owners all the time, but you have people from one property owner to another property, whether it be fencing, water, all these other elements that come into play.
Yeah.
That's not property owner to property owner. As far as municipality goes, that's water drainage.
When a civil matter isn't met, when it isn't dealt with, let's pretend this is just a civil matter that isn't dealt with, who do the landowners go to to get answers on how it's going to be dealt with?
That's what hap, you have rights and obligations, and that's what happens with a lot of legal stuff happens. Because people don't get the right answers.
So so that is what's supposed to happen, it's supposed to go legal?
No, I didn't say that, I'm just saying that there's 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 ways to get to deal with it on a civil matter.
How?
And then landlord, landlord can help with some some meeting of the minds, or in this situation, this started, if you look at your indications here, had to do with water coming off commercial, that's a municipal. As far as landlord to landlord, that's civil, and that's, that's a civil matter, and you have to deal with them.
And and when that can't happen, what do you do?
There there's government agencies, if you wanna look at that, you can go to water service, water, all water stewardship, all those things come into play.
So the town and the and the council has nothing to do with building permits and?
Well, they have building permits, it doesn't, doesn't cross off every element that has to do with building, whether there be water, uh, people building too high a fence, that comes into, it comes, but if you build a road breaker fence, it's on the property line, you can have that.
The piece that we don't have any control over, to my knowledge, is, you know, the sump pump lines and the the eavesdrops, those pointing in whatever direction, that's not a council matter, that's not something that we can intervene into, my knowledge, when we can crack it and roll. So I think there's two elements here, there's there's some pump lines and eavesdrops and, you know, that's all outside of us. The whole drainage, you know, ditches, all of that, that's within our scope.
So when there is a problem between two, and and you try and settle it, then the next step is not to come to council, it's.
There's always so much council can do, we can't, we can't force people to do things, even if you take a look at Derek's vehicles, all that kind of thing, we have to go through formalities to do that, even that is limited as to what a council can do. Council can only tell people so much, and on their property, they can have a dog, they can have a cat, they can, they can let their dog.
You you can you understand how this is very confusing for me when when the chair of the building committee is who I have to deal with?
Right.
And council is the same person, like, could council, chair of the committee just tell the chair of the council that this is what we need to do, it's the same person, Dave?
Okay, I can, I can shift this right now, I will shift it to the deputy head of council and take over this meeting right now, and you can discuss it with you.
Okay.
I I have a a question in terms of the engine, engineering aspects of the, uh, the four blocks, when you are knowingly going to have to have your sump pumps going at a constant, therefore then affecting like where you're putting that water, doesn't that have to not affect other ratepayers due to the fact that a place that we approved to be built, then now is constantly pumping from under the ground into our areas and then affecting the ratepayers?
Well, you have to have water dispersal somewhere.
Correct, in an appropriate way not to affect a ratepayer.
Uh, that's, to get to my knowledge, people have jurisdiction over something.
But engineering wise, correct, would have to go to a standard set by the municipality and the problems.
Problems more so when it comes to sump pumps, et cetera.
Okay.
There is definitely a requirement for any building that is being constructed to adhere to the manageable building codes.
Correct.
Which includes drainage.
Yeah.
There is leeway for construction period, um, no guarantee on what the timeline on that is. Um, and obviously, no guarantee on what rain events, snow events, et cetera, are going to happen in the interim, but there needs to be appropriate drainage provided by the time that the construction is completed.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just offer this, there's the, under the codes, you cannot dump water directly onto your neighbors. Indirectly is another situation. Because you'd have no idea where the water's coming from, it could go onto individual properties, so.
And, yeah, and that is definitely where it then becomes a civil matter, which anytime somebody comes to me, my suggestion is to speak to your solicitor, because neighbor to neighbor, there's nothing municipality wise that we can do. I do think some of this is going to help, it's not going to help unless the drainage lines and whatnot find a way to also get into what the municipality is required to do.
I, just one more point, so indirectly putting water onto a neighbor, then the neighbor that is getting the water, if he indirectly then funnels the water onto municipal property, then is it a municipal matter?
We want to be ensuring that any water that is coming onto municipal property is drained appropriately. Um, I don't think anybody would ever suggest that individual property owners should make drainage into any of the municipal rights of way, because again, there's a lot that we have to do when it comes to municipal rights of way and drainage that we have to comply with. Um, it's not to say that we certainly wouldn't work with any individual when we see a finished product to know where we need to go with it or what the best solution would be, um, to see if there's a way of making it incorporated into what public works manager is already taking a look at that has been identified as an issue.
I have no doubt that what we're doing here is going to help going forward. What do I do with the $14,000 bill I'm going to have now?
Yeah.
And to say that the sump lines and the downs boats, we, I'm to use your, indirectly, like when the sump lines are ran to the north and the slope is to the north and there's no diverting it, I can tell you where it's going, to the north. When the downs boats remain up against the wall, in an upright position, what is the first thing everybody does with it's, oh, it's gonna rain, we better put the downs boats down. When it falls directly down and the slope is to the north, which way is it going to run? To the north. The problem is when there's piles of dirt left there, it can only go like this and like this between the dirt. It's negligence is what happened with this. The word is negligence.
Was the dirt, um, gonna be cleaned up and you stopped it, or did that happen, or?
The dirt on my property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you wanted to just leave it there until you had your insurance hanging up?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's not the piles I'm talking about.
No, I saw them.
The piles.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Derek, I'm gonna ask one dumb question, and I'm always bad for this, but if the wall coming across commercial was properly diverted, would it help alleviate the whole situation?
Would it have helped?
Would it have helped?
Oh, yeah, because when it, when it came across commercial, it hit four, I'll call it four temporary driveways, and had no choice but to run a little bit to the east.
Or a little bit to the west.
A little bit to the west and a lot right between.
Mm-hmm. That's in between the four plaques and Donalds.
So as soon as it ran between the four plaques and Donalds, it pushed baseball sized, softball sized stones off of that lot, all the way down the edge, and you can go look at the pile of dirt that's there and the stones. I mean, where did anyone think it was going to come? And we're saying it's a torrential rain event.
It's two inches, it's not a torrential rain.
Two inches is not a train, even if it comes in 10 minutes, we've had, there has to be some kind of due diligence to stop this, and those driveways are still above grade. So I I've talked till I blew in the face, I I'm not losing neighbors over this, I'm asking.
Where help?
I'm asking for help.
Yeah.
There's no drainage done by, like, can can we as as, I have a drive, I have a culvert at the end of my driveway, it was not a choice to put that in. I had put it in because there's a ditch there. Every place I drive around town, there's culverts. How come there's a four plaques there with driveways in it above grade that used to run east and now it's, who administers that? It's just supposed to be me that says it to the, I don't think so. I don't think it's up to me to go and say, you guys gotta run your downs boats east ditch five times, you guys can't pump, that's, and when it doesn't happen, what's my next step to recall? Like I said, on June 15th, if this isn't fixed, I'm going to end up with water in my shed.
And and on that specific piece, that's not us, and that's where legal solicitor is your option on that. If you can't come to a conclusion with the property owner, the sump pumps and the eavesdrops, we just don't have any authority on that, Derek, so why is it not the scope that we can handle here? But we can handle the drainage.
Drainage, I think, well, so so the drainage on those driveways, there is a plan?
So, yeah, I think we should get into the plan here, because I don't even know how we're gonna postpone the floor to to discuss.
Well, may may I just ask one question, Mr. Drax? Um, because I live in the rural area, I know when anyone makes a new approach, you have to put a culvert. Why is that, why wasn't there culverts put in?
But there's no, there's no ditch on that side of the street.
I said the same thing.
Okay.
Generally, we're willing to, I kept the application on my desk. Okay.
Are we gonna end?
I would say that, yeah, the delegation part, and then actually get into discussion.
Thank you for that.
There we do, right there, yeah, was that the extent? Are you good?
I I still would like an answer, like, I mean, it seems ridiculous to me that the next step is of where? Like, I I don't understand how, if I build a, if I bring a 110 foot garden shed into Long East, I need a berm. It's 110 foot garden shed, how is that, 110 square? It's over 100 square feet. I don't think that's gonna negatively affect my neighborhood, yeah, you can build a $700,000 condo or whatever the number is, with no plans for drainage, no timeline on landscaping, you can look at a quote and go, that's too much, and just not do it.
I'll I'll just bring up this, Derek, and if you look at the new subdivision that happened for Highland, that fall runs downhill.
Right.
There is no, there's no drainage in that.
Good.
Absolutely nothing.
I I can speak to that, across the street from you, there's, there's a, there's a lot that has a four foot retaining wall.
Yeah.
Built by someone, because you can't just pump water on your neighbor.
No, I understand, but I'm saying on my side, in which you also did landscaping.
There's no drainage there?
There's no drainage. In the front there is, in the back, and that's where Colin would do, who gets all his water from the church park and what, from the neighbors, all goes to his place, and then into old vodka store place, which has the sump pump that drains into the ditch.
Okay, and and you know where that water comes from after that, Dave?
Where it goes.
Where it goes.
You.
Exactly.
Yeah, and but that's what I'm saying, that that's, there's no drainage made for that subdivision that you can say, you know, so it's neighbor to neighbor.
So that's a fault of the town there, too?
Well, when the subdivision made, maybe there should have been some drainage that adds a whole subdivision, because I wasn't here when that took place, but now it was there, and and I know that there's been issues. But it, that's, again, outside once they're sold, and there's now there's individual owners, becomes property owner to property owner.
I like it to be said, Derek, I feel your pain, I feel like you've got a $14,000 repair bill, you're gonna be faced with, uh, they go matters that don't come cheap, and it's not your fault, it it's not.
Why?
Why, yeah, why, like, I I'm I'm gonna be asking that question as well. And this could be alleviated with a few strong backs and a shovel, but it, I think in a lot of ways to stop the overland flooding that's coming across commercial and back in Donald and everything else. Like, we do have the right to make ditches for drainage, and the streets are so wide that there is gotta be property there to put ditches in, so.
But I think you look at those, Council Fishers, if you look at City of Brandon, every time there's a heavy rain, and that won't be a heavy rain, it it's a building, because they have their natural flow that goes proper ways.
But the problem was, it didn't used to be.
No, I'm just saying, and that's, again, where you're at, Derek, you you know, is it up to the municipality to make sure every property owner is looked after? That's not our job as a city.
My my comment to that is, make an attempt.
Yeah.
Just make an attempt.
Okay.
In 20 minutes, I could fix half that problem.
Let me just go through this first, we'll get this.
I just, I I just wanted to help, uh, kind of equate to the amount of water that was flowing, um, when Derek got flooded out down below. I had a 75 foot coil, uh, long hose, um, that was laying behind my shed and the four plaques. It washed that hose down and put it on the wall of his building. Now, 75 feet of garden hose just doesn't flow, no, that that was the flow, they carried it down in all coil, like it didn't string it out, it ended up down there coiled, and so that's the, you know, what we're dealing with here, we're not talking about a little trickle or anything else, it it was massive.
Do you have a culvert near driveway?
No.
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 And, um, being resolved at presentation of Derek Shear related to flooding issues and water pumping onto his property at 203 Park, can you be received? Would you move that? Uh, the gentleman's second comes for hatch, all in favor? If you wanna move to that.
Um, if we could do the decision on the public hearing that would allow Mr. Peters to leave, that's the first item of the general business.
Okay, potential use application C2 slash 2023, for direct reading of vehicles on AL Agriculture Limited Zone of Block 1, Plan 2528, BLPO located on Park in the Northeast Corner, 23717. The northeast corner twenty-three, seven, seventeen, WPF Peters. Being resolved in the conditional use application of receipt two twenty twenty-three to our storage vehicle. AL Agriculture Limited Zone of Block One, Plan Two Five Two Eight BLTO located on Park Northeast Corner five three seven seventeen WPF Peters. Be approved, secretary, receipt of all required provincial permits. We move that? Council Jones, second, Council Fisher, all in favor?
Just a quick question and I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure I know the answer to this, but I just wanna make sure this is the former Brentweather property disaster. Thank you.
I had to do a lot of scratching. I've lived here all my life. Where the hell is that?
Can I just add one thing? Um, typically council, when we have a recommendation, it is usually without any conditions attached to it. In this instance, the applicants and I have recognized that there will be a requirement to get a permit from the highways department because it comes off the highways. The applicant has spoken to highways. They do not believe it is going to be any kind of an issue, but there is a permit required. That is why there is the condition on this report.
All in favor? Okay.
I can more skip to the rest, I can.
Forward to that.
If that's what council would like to do, that is certainly doable.
Ready book?
Okay. All right, so this is some of the, I have considered the, the criminal update. My folks made the discussion.
What side of the road are we on?
Yeah.
Well, if you look at.
This is the road around straight, the exit is straight down.
Well, the church is over here. Well, I understand that, I, but it would really make it a lot easier if I had a McDonald's shed and a four-plate, this is the thing on. See Commercial Street there? I got Commercial Street. So if we take a look at the, uh, Commercial Street in front of the corner, left outside there, the, the, the.
Mills Street is one to go to Highway Church.
Mm-hmm. And, and the two, the two places. So this improved ditch is on the, so the west side or the inside of the road?
The east, uh, west side.
West.
But there, where the red arrow is, it's the east side.
Right. Okay. And there's a. There is a culvert. Not, wait, bring your flag. Thanks, David. Show me a square. So. Maybe you could have been like I said, let's start on Commercial Street, that culvert is in the air.
Yeah, it's way too high. Um, I would like to put it back where it needs to be to flow the water more to the east instead of just spilling out right at the end of the culvert, which. Maybe going over the road right there.
Yeah, so if we, if we start there and we're eastward, can we do that?
Yeah, well, there's one that goes through Commercial there. Um, well, there's a, a few problems here. So the one that goes under Commercial, I believe, was a twenty-four inch, or no, the one that's above ground.
Right.
Is a twenty-four inch.
Okay.
The one that goes through, uh, Commercial is an eighteen inch. And then when you get down to Shear Shop, it's a sixteen inch, which under provincial regulations, you are supposed to have the same size upstream.
Right.
So I'm proposing that that should be replaced. Um, I think it will alleviate some of it backing up.
Excuse me, Kelsey, which one are you talking to? The one right by your, Perry's old shop or the shop?
No, I'm talking about the one right in front of Shears.
Right down.
Yeah, it's not a true size it needs to be.
It is collapsed, I believe, is not.
Uh, yeah, it was definitely damaged. There's so much debris from the runoff like he's mentioning. Yeah, I mean, it's barely able to even flow through there properly. Um, but also that gives another problem of it going straight to the highways yard. So we, I talked to Drew, together we had a plan. There was an idea of possibly doing a burn, um, but that would be on the edge of that corner to divert it, not to go straight to highways. Or there was another option, we could put a culvert through the road more at Commercial and Mill. And fifty-fifty the water, because I mean, by, by the town shop, it's so much higher there.
Yeah.
It's not gonna hurt anything there. And below that, you have a lot of trees, grass.
Yeah, you'd have to dig that down then in order to make sure it flows that way. Cause I think we looked at that last, um, a little high and it's, there's so much going there across the road. Cause of the height.
Yeah, I mean.
Sure, yeah.
I think that both sides of the ditch need to be rehoned on the whole street.
Could we put where you have that red culvert from the picture? Could we, is there enough height to put a culvert kind of on an angle like you have it through, through, uh, Mill, Mill Street? To take some of that water, see where it comes off, where they're gonna have the weeping tiles and, uh, and, uh, downsides. And have a pipe there that will take that to the, to that ditch on, it needs to clean out, I know the ditch on the east side.
Yeah.
But then get that down there, so it runs around the, the bike and, and then you wouldn't get as much water going down Mill Street towards the corner. For the highway, because I know that's an issue, uh.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
A lot of that water across there, I might, I don't know what you think, Derek, but I might be leaving some of that.
What is the plan for the driveways on the condos?
Well, I know, well, put my different hat on there, is that Dane, she put living stone landscape gaping, ran cages on the whole front area. He said, there's not a culvert. That came from the last game. He said the lowest part for that point is at the far east driveway. And it all runs down from there, from the top to the bottom. Now, I think there may be some grooming to be done, but as far as what Dane was saying, no culvers required.
The, the four plaques is almost a hundred and fifty foot down. I, I don't know how, Dave, when that water, in, in this plan, Chelsea, is, is fine to help what's existing, but it doesn't address the issue of that water coming across the street. And that's, that's the biggest concern in all of this. It is, um, you know, water can't make that right-hand turn when there's a volume of water that culvert cannot handle. So it crosses straight across the street. So the four plaques being higher, that's just a fact. You know, that, that water has to go somewhere and it isn't, you know, it isn't gonna be a gentle flow when that occurs.
You're talking, you're talking surface water off the road?
No.
Are we talking?
We're talking overflow water coming across. So that water, like, that culvert doesn't even come close to handling the volume coming down that ditch. You get more water across the road than flows in that ditch. So lowering the end of that culvert, yes, that's, that's good, but that water, it's uphill to the east in that ditch. And, you know, I think the ditch has gotta be lowered.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, Craig, you looked at that.
Yep.
A year ago.
We, yeah, we were, we, we did clean some ends over there too.
Yeah, no, no, then that'll help, but again, the, the ditch cannot handle the volume of water.
You're putting the ditch on the south side of Commercial.
That's in front of Porky's and Fiddler's.
Well.
To the corner of Mill Street and Commercial.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, just past Dennis's where it's coming down from the church, right?
The church and the hall water.
Right.
And the, and the big issue there is that's where all the utilities are located.
Well, yeah, like I know Igo brought service into the four plaques, uh, there. Uh, Westman Cable has, has gone there. Um, now, the other thing I just wanna add, and Perry Klein told me, they used to have an overflow cut at the, the corner, just prior to the ditch. So that when there was a high volume of water, the overflow would take it to the east, you know, get it a little bit further down. And I guess when Fiddler built the place and they had excess dirt, they just, they filled that. I, I don't know where the property, like, there is a, uh, the town has property there, obviously for the ditch. I don't know how far it goes to the east and I don't know. I remember the cut, but I don't know if, how, if it went on to that property or not. But, yeah, that overflow did take a lot of that excess water, which now crosses the road.
And I don't think the condos need a ditch for the water that originates on the condo lot. I fully believe living stones, it will run east. It's the stuff that originates south of the condo lot, like when it comes across the road. We all need a plan in place that when it does come across the road, it has the ability to go east.
So you think it's all where the white pipe is, ninety degree pipe is from there?
That's it. It's coming from, no, no, it's not all coming because it runs down, like Dawn said, it runs down what should be a back lane past the old Fiddlers off the church behind. It runs down there too. And when it comes there, it takes a slight. Bend to the west, hits those driveways, and then last time it hit the driveways around between the condos. If I was a condo owner right now, it's gonna come down that back lane. If, if the stuff that originates on the lot, Livingstone, right, it will make its way east. The stuff that crosses the street and that stuff isn't, can't be contained in a ditch because it's coming across what's supposed to be a back lane. There is no ditch there. It's going to hit that same as it did before. And some of it will, if it's a large volume water, some of it will run less. It will run slightly uphill to the west because it's a big enough volume of water.
Derek, can I just add to that? I, I've looked at this lots and, and one thought I had is the water, at one time they tell me it used to run down the side of Four Street on the east side. What, it can't do that now without a whole bunch of work because it's, the ditch is gone completely. You'd have to start and basically raid up with the whipper wheel or rake and, and kind of divert it. So, and, and I just don't think that, that would be a very good option. I'm wondering if, uh, possibly two, two inch, like four inches asphalt run from basically Mill Street. Just past where that culvert is, and not as far as where the entrance to the shop is, but build that up with four, two lifts of asphalt, two, two inch lifts, four inches. At that, down past, maybe even past Perry's, somewhere there to try to get that water when it comes up, it won't run across the road. And, and you know, you've got four more inches of, of grace there. I don't know what you guys think, but that, I've thought of that. And do two lifts in and we keep that water in the ditch, which been lower as well. Sure, y'all get some running off the road that'll go, but it shouldn't flow from that.
I just thought I'd have. I think the problem, Bob, is that it, it is literally shooting over that, you know, where it hits Commercial Street. So you could have a six inch burn, let's say, but it's, it's just coming with that volley. And, and this, this was why I, I go back to, to where the other, uh, Whipper Will property, the first one. Where that, uh, ditch is turned, it goes behind them to the east and then, you know, um. Again, yeah, that, a lot of that, well, originally, I think most of that water went straight north down. Um, can they not split it there, like put a culvert in? Um, you know, to take at least some of that water straight north, rather than just all having to go to the east to the north. Yeah, but, uh, you, you know, and, and I, I know you don't wanna open up a floodgate and just let it all go rushing down there because it'll create another problem. But I, I'm suggesting possibly splitting it so that at least part of it, let's say, if it can be set up that, uh, when a bigger water comes, it'll carry some of that excess. Rather than. Cause yeah, when it's, when it's coming across, like Herman Hydrus told me that he stood there and looked out his front window. He says, Dawn, like I couldn't believe my eyes, it was a river shooting across.
Yeah, so, so to me, like we got an issue, number one with the south ditch. Number two with culvert, a twenty-four inch culvert going into an eighteen inch culvert going into a sixty inch culvert. That is the wrong.
Well, you're not allowed to do that.
Not anymore. Not anymore. That's, there's reason for that.
Yeah.
So I think that's where we have to improve our ditches and, and that even if there's, uh, utilities down there, we can still groom that ditch. It doesn't have to be dunked down to China.
And I think that if we're digging the ditch, probably some erosion control would help to, to, um, let the grass grow in the ditch. To help the runoff that are plugging Derek's, uh, culvert.
The only reason that it gets plugged is Derek from the culvert.
Well, that's what I need if we can, I mean, then it should be landscaped sooner than later, right? I mean, I know it's a new build, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that plus, uh, you know, when it got to Livingston, they were, they were booking it August, late August. So even if we got them, it wouldn't be till late August, so I'm looking at other alternatives. As far as the building committee goes, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, the, the challenge that I'm having is I am not an expert in water and to my knowledge, I don't think anybody in here is.
I, I would, I think you guys have an excellent team somewhere in the East Valley. I would ask them first and then they would say, no, we're agricultural. We have no experience in residential. Why don't you try? Burns Mendel is the name I know. Like we can sit at this table and go, okay, well, this, this and this. But it's, it's not just the water that takes that ninety degree current, it's also the water that comes off the, the church and the hall and the back. It comes across down what's supposed to be a back lane. There is no ditch there.
Eric, one of the road and. What do you, what's your thoughts if we built a bunch of, uh, rock steps down the ditch behind the hall where, towards where the ninety degree pipe is? Just slow the flow of water.
I don't know. But you're gonna have a backup game into the other side where, um, the other four plaques is?
It's not necessarily gonna back it up.
So you can slow it down, it's gonna back up.
It already floods that one.
Yeah.
And that's on the.
I, I, I agree that, I think you can race around this for the next three hours, not get anywhere. But, um, I think this is the starting point and maybe we do get a vote in the county, the council can come up with a resolution that we, I'd actually, I hesitate to get. Just say, let's get this group. I think we have to take a little more in-depth view as to what municipal requirements are. I know that this is not a problem, this is not a reason, this is a problem in Brandon, this is a problem in Melita, this is a problem, every municipality has these issues. It is not due, so.
Can I make a suggestion? On any new builds going forward, we, there needs to be a timeline. Like, we can't say as the building committee, we tried this and then we need August. We knew in March, we reached a made of this condo. We had to have money set aside then. If the bill is twenty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars, you can't, you can't just keep exploring other, like, any, any landscaper that is any good at all. Should be booking into August. If they're not, I would ask why. Like, if we left till the last minute, oh, Livingstone, which we did, because we had no plan in place as the building committee, and I'm including we. There was no plan in place. Livingstone was a last minute, two week ago thing. Of course they're booking into August. If they're any good at all, they should be booking into August. Well, there, as a council, you have to have some plan in place. Okay, you're building it, you build. What is the timeline?
Can I make some provision? So with, um, the Baker Cities, and I obviously know, I'm not, I'm not on that scale, but there's a stormwater plan for new builds, right? So it's either gonna go to the front of your property or to the back of your property. And you have a plan on where that water is gonna go. So I mean, that could be something that potentially could come down the pipes later. Um, as for the, the landscaping, I mean, I'm, I've already done landscaping, so I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. But I think that with the plan in place for the ditching and the water's already gonna flow east, just like Dane said. And I think that it will alleviate a lot of the problem. Um.
And if this meeting was June, July of twenty twenty-two?
On July.
July of twenty twenty-three.
Again, there's, yeah, there's no bylaws in, in place for that, so you can't be saying, we're gonna do this, we're gonna.
No, and I'm just saying.
It's something that council will have to take into consideration. I mean, making sure there are legal bylaws. You just gotta say, hey, we're gonna follow, we have to make sure they're legal and they're, they're, they can be applied.
Yeah, I was going to say, there are some things, um, municipal that I don't believe we have jurisdiction over such as trying to implement a timeline because we don't know. Especially with the new build, renovation might be a little bit different, but the new build, um, I know from the construction of this building, it didn't run anywhere close to on time. I'm not sure municipally that we've got jurisdiction over trying to put that in place. But I do know that by final completion, there are things that need to be done. Um, whether or not.
I would think there could be a timeline from a date of. I would think there could be a timeline from a date of moving. Like if you're allowed to move into houses because they're complete, there should be a timeline from that point forward that is nine months?
But the only thing that happens though, and then problems arise, and it's, it's always bothering usually, right? So you give a certain timeline and then no one's ever gonna give me one, you know, like for things so long. But if it, if it's set in three months or whatever, like everything usually is always set, especially with COVID too, right? Like it's part of the.
I, I would just like a plan.
Okay.
Well, if they just, just so you're aware that there's only so much a council can do. And municipality, so.
I, I think the other problem is it's a huge conflict of interest when head of council and head of the building committee are the same person.
I don't see that.
Well, Johnny was getting your back to me with all the answers and today is the first time I've heard him do it.
Uh, Mr. Sherman, can I just, I'd just like to make a suggestion that we keep uh, you know, what we're gonna find out here in the next bit, if we're, we're gonna look at somebody to look into this drainage, can we keep uh Dawn and Derek in the loop there, like whether it, you know, or somebody can do that?
We'll do our best. I, I mean, we, there are certain things we can dispose, there are some things we can't dispose all the time, so I don't want to be saying that we're going to do everything and then we're going, they don't get back and they gain, they say, well, you didn't do this, well, there's certain criteria that we have to follow. Um, but let's be careful, it's, that's not just car closure, so you know, Chelsea can, get home or somebody just so they know.
I know you guys want to move on and, and I just uh want, want to throw out an idea, Chelsea. So where that right-handed uh culvert is, you say it's a twenty-four inch. Can we not go to a larger culvert there?
Well, without application.
But everything has to go through the culvert.
Okay, but.
It's depending on what's upstream from that. You know what, if I don't, um, we get together, we'll walk it together and then we can talk about, you know.
But to me, if, you know, if more water could go through there and turn and get ahead of east, then it would be less to go over.
And that was it.
And the one under Commercial Street has to equal the one, like is that not too small to them?
It, it can't be a lesser size going downstream.
So it is a lesser size.
That's exactly my plan, that we already went on first.
The water, let's say, let's say we put a three foot in there and the water's going east, branching off, going north down or is that?
Mills, Mills.
Mill, I'm sorry. Does, it does, it shouldn't have to be the same there, does it? Because we're splitting the flow then? Anyway, I, I'll leave that to you. I'll, and I appreciate, listen, I want to say, I think we've had a discussion here this morning, you guys are very aware of what's going on. Uh, and I appreciate the time we've spent here because I know your delegations don't last.
It was actually ten minutes, we're getting, so.
Well, yeah, let it go a little longer than we usually do, but it's only kind of, as a delegation, it's had some other concerns from that, so. I want to make sure you're aware of this now, culverts are culverts, we have to apply, anytime we increase the size of a culvert, we have to apply to the province, we have to get permits, we have to get approval. So that cannot be done and will not be done in a short period of time. And I'd be surprised with what's going on with the government right now, with the upcoming election. There's all kinds of issues, so we'll do our best. But let's not tie ourselves into this, say, we're gonna do it next week, because that's not probable.
That's not feasible.
But I appreciate the fact that now I know, like I didn't know anything about this until today, nothing. And at least I'm gonna go down there, I'm gonna walk it and I'm going to try to explore it. And Chelsea and I have been friends through a lot and she's gonna guide me through her thought process and I might have a little nudge somewhere to try to figure this out.
Yeah, and anytime any council members, like I, glad to meet with them and, you know, I the oldest person here and I, and so I've seen a lot of these things, you know, I've got some history there and I can explain some things to some changes. So anybody who wants to meet with us, we're available.
Good, thank you, no, thank you. So uh, Mr. Perry, on the service of council business here.
Can you do some sort of a resolution on this? And what does council want?
We're getting in camera.
Derek, I think we need to do that. I mean, what's, somebody has a resolution they wish to bring forward, but so.
But, sorry, I, I have another question for Chelsea, is there something? Because I, I believe we should be getting an engineer for this, like I, I, and maybe you can tell me that I'm wrong and, you know, this is your expertise. But I'm, I'm uncomfortable with us spending a whole bunch of money and then find out later that it's still not working, right?
Yeah.
So I would rather spend a bit more money on an engineer right now because this is not a simple issue. There's water coming from multiple directions, we've got changes to the landscape. So my question, I think, is, you know, do you think an engineer is, would be helpful?
I mean, not just for the scope of this project, for the scope of the whole town, really. I mean, there should be a plan in place, because we have new builds coming in and we want to encourage these engines. You know, maybe this is something people that they can do, that's the goal, we want people to live here.
So recognizing that an engineer is going to further slow this down, is there steps that you see that, you know, would be positive, active and quick that could be helpful, sort of as a meantime solution?
I, like I knew Tru and I walked the whole thing. It's very knowledgeable when it comes to the water system, it's a very good idea. Um, as for an engineer, it's gonna be expensive. I mean, everything's gonna cost money in this case and whether it happen in the next week, absolutely not. Um, you know, we don't have money set aside just to do these big projects, right?
Do you want to have a resolution, have the administration deal with something in the short term? And then long-term engineer?
Yeah, like something that, you know, I'll ask your questions again, is there something you see that could be quick and and cheap that would have an impact for the short term here while we try to figure out a permanent solution?
Well, I, I, I fully understand, you know, what's involved in timelines with government and I, I think the, possibly the quickest and easiest was what we did a year ago. We had cleaning the culverts and uh, you know, opening up a culvert that was plugged in, you know, that all helps. But yeah, we need a, a little, a better plan and a bigger resolution to this. And, and I agree with Chelsea that, you know, uh, part of, part of the problem is that this council did not create this issue. This happened twenty and thirty years ago, you know, where they were looking for, let's say, re, chief resolutions to problems. And these problems have, you know, gotten bigger and.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I'd rather spend a bit more money right now, get an engineer, fix this for good properly than try to banadate a solution, but I also don't want there to be a torrential rain next weekend, you know.
That's, that's out of our control and.
No, I, I know, but if there is something like cleaning out a culvert that we can do quickly and easily, that would be helpful, then let's do that in the.
I think cleaning out the ditch behind the curtain, very sharp. Deepening that ditch a little bit, that'll at least keep the water that's coming through that culvert in that ditch.
It will flow this down.
Right now, it's coming onto the road and working its way into the ditch on the west side of the road.
Yeah, and is that something we have the capability to do, Chelsea?
Pardon?
Is that something we have the capability to do ourselves?
Well, I mean, we have to, find somebody to do that work because we don't have the equipment right now, but anyway. It's, it's definitely possible.
Don't think it's a lot of work there, you know, I think it's, I think it's.
No, but I, in, in, in Republic Works, why are we doing one side of the ditch and we're not doing the other side of the ditch? Like if the equipment's there, we don't want to waste money doing just the one, like, you know, try to plan the jobs together so we're saving.
Well, and that's what we're saying, come back, bring it back very quickly to a council so we can take a look at it, so we don't get into this. If you have something.
I think the town loader on the east side would be enough just to take it out.
Yeah, I think so. Just use a town loader and just get them to just, so the water will run to get, it's not a permanent fix, but it'll get that water.
And the water is gonna continue to come across the road, so those driveways that Livingstone says will be underwater, they will, but they won't, won't run the water that's coming across the road. I think those driveways need swale or whatever, where you want to put on it, so that it'll allow it to go east for the water that comes over the road.
And that, that would be a groovy thing, and that's something to gain for the, the land ownership of them. But in case, that, that's, you want to do a resolution of that?
Oh, I've got something here I don't know.
And I wouldn't spend a whole bunch of money putting water into the highways, I think, because of what's going on in agriculture right now. If somebody catches wind of that, we'd spend a lot of money to put water into the highway yard.
Well, I think highways is responsible for some of that too, they, they should have some sort of uh solution to that. It's right in line with everything, so it's hard to divert completely.
Is there not a ditch beside the highways?
There is a ditch at the offensive, and the water is supposed to go that way, so it will not through their yard. But in the cases where everyone gets flooded out and everything gets backlogged, it's made of, it showed up in there and it will spring.
I can see that being a fair, easy fix.
Chelsea, can, can you lower the end of that nugget recall?
I think that that is probably one of the first places we've started.
Perfect. Hey, so let's, let's, let's do some of that and, and we'll try to get through the resolution here. And I would put board if somebody wants to.
Could I, I just want to ask a question, is there a possibility if financially it is quite large that the building committee then also help with the cost due to the fact that where the house was built, you now have four pumps pumping out of a spring?
Well, and I guess if it's, and I'll just put on the different hat of being building committee, that basically is stop pumping. There's no water, hardly any water going down that ditch right now, is there not, right?
As you heard last week.
And then when you're um, then when you replenish that groundwater, then the same thing is going to happen.
Right, you know, everything is running to the ditch.
Okay.
In the winter, though, it won't, or in the winter, it won't.
No, I know, and.
Keep in mind that we're not dealing with that.
Right, and that's not, that's outside of the scope.
Well, I, no, I, I realize that and I'm just talking about like, due to the fact that now we have to alter our drainage due to uh property being built.
No way to do that. Yeah, because Mr. Fackel has had the three years of that water coming across, is that not correct?
Yeah, that, and, and it's gotten worse, like, you know, if it, if it was once every five years, you just kind of accept it, but when it's regularity, like twice a year and you know.
Two to four times a year.
Yeah, and then it becomes worse.
So, yeah, let's, we, we can only deal with councils, as far as councils. As far as the buildings are concerned, if a lot of owners, that can be them. So that's the motion that I was, if you want to.
Yeah, and I don't know if we want to split it out, I'm thinking that from the conversation, you're not asking one without passing the other, but if you want to split it out.
Be resolved, an administration directed to deepen ditches and clean culverts within existing budgets and further the hook obtained for engineer services for a drainage plan. The council, very often do that, the seconders? Council go, discussion? All in favor? Okay, um, so we'll turn back on to our agenda. Okay, to the drainage. Again, uh, Dave, can we, you part?
You can sure we can. We're pretty entertaining. Thanks again, everyone, we appreciate the time and.
Okay, this is an application for tile drainage, where his information has been received for next-gen drainage solutions on behalf of Peter Volken with respect to a proposed tile drainage project located on North Eight Eight Seventeen W P M. Whereas the request has been made for a cut through Road Forty Four Door. Whereas concerns expressed by public works manager related areas of provincial jurisdiction permit. Therefore, be resolved as a request for tile drainage permission and consent from next-gen drainage solutions on behalf of Peter Volken to supply and install tile drainage on North Eight Eight Seventeen W P M be approved subject to preparing to its original state following installation, including city of Rana's education for roadwork. With all works to be completed, consultation is a public question. Let me see, do that? Counselor Tabb, seconder? Counselor McGregor, discussion? All in favor? Okay, be resolved, it's proposed fiber plan, fiber path to the north side of Road Forty Four North, east by three R three forty-eight in the southeast, southwest quarter, southwest quarter, Eighteen Eight Nineteen W. As outlined on the map attached, corresponds dated June nineteen twenty twenty-three. Remar, now be approved subject to the fiber offset be one meter for the proxy line and all road crossings being direction drilled that work area restores as former state. They move that? No, seconder? Counselor Fisher, discussion?
I, I have discussion. And I know Chelsea and I kind of talked about this, but what is considered to be uh restored, to restore the area to the former state? Because what we left that, it was absolutely horrible on the dump road.
So we should be contacted and then come back?
Yeah, I talked, I talked to the crews, um, they were gonna let the other crew know. The only issue that comes up though is, it's under a hydro line, so is that the hydras right away then? But I mean. How does the respect of the.
Hydro will have an easement to run power, but it's still our property, it's still our.
So how the respect to that property owner, it was a pretty big mess that they left there.
Okay, so we should be contacted, that was horrible, notice?
I believe when you are at, I talked to.
We are the property owner, we go. It's a municipal property.
Yeah, it's ours, yeah.
But, so, yeah.
It's on the way in, like she maintained it. And unfortunately, it is ours, not hers, but I can see the concern there for sure.
Well, it's our, we have the resolution, the resolution states it has to be restored, so it's not, they get formal notice to them, the administration.
Yeah, typically our economics have been really good, they've got two separate crews, one doing the installation and one doing the restoration. Um, anytime that we have contacted them with an area, whether it was on behalf of the owners or the owners themselves contacted them, or when it's on our property that we've contacted them, they have ensured that a, that the crew come out and reach it.
I didn't know how you were gonna do this. Because they were like cutting trees and, and just like.
Or they just wanted to go for them.
Yeah.
Uh, Johnny did, we have to make, we have to deal with that, we gotta take photos, you gotta take.
The lake committee ruled that they never did clean up trees, because Henry Carroll was at.
Okay, then again, those are things that you need to make me aware of so that I can follow up with our now.
If we don't know, we can't.
Well, no, back, Jersey knew.
Okay, if you didn't bring it forward to the field, formal notice has to go to these people.
Yeah, I, I document any of this that we're doing, just because we've got contract with them, it insured that they would do the restoration work, so.
Danielle, all in favor? Be resolved that a twenty-five dollar sponsorship donation to Major Set Whiskey Museum in support of its Free Tuesday mission campaign. Would wish to move that? Counselor Jones, second, Counselor McGregor, discussion? All in favor? Be resolved in accordance with approach policy trend zero zero eight, the application of Delman Dugle and Dugle Farms Burbank Limited to construct an approach on Road Thirty Nine North located on part of the southwest corner, Twenty One Seven Nineteen W P M be approved. Moved by Counselor McGregor, seconder? Counselor Jones, discussion?
Counselor McGregor, Mr. Sherman, it's a more question, um. So there is an existing approach in this field, they're indicating in correspondence that it's very steep, has a large rock in it. Do we have an obligation to put, to have one approach into a field or, and people pay for the second one? Or do they pay for the first one as well?
Um, they will pay for any culverts or work to build the approach. The policy specifically states that for.
The policy specifically states that for field access, you're allowed to have two uh, within an eight hundred meter stretch, so that would be his quarter section. So he is allowed to have the two, but it is his expense. Uh, in order to do it, Chelsea has been out and met with him with respect to whether or not he's going to require a culvert, whether the ditch is such. Yeah, yeah, we've already spoke about it, I told them what it would require, and it's just pending approval from council.
Yeah, so I think my question is not whether a second is allowed, that's, I understand that part. Do we have an obligation for my first, and if the first is deficient, not, not good, then do we have any obligation to improve it?
Rectify it, um, I believe, and this goes back a little bit, that the approach policy has been amended in the last, I'm gonna say four years, I believe there was a time where council provided the approach and provided the culvert and provided the road construction. The new policy did away with that in that. Why should everybody in the municipality be supplementing somebody for getting an approach? So I would say, under the old permit, we would have, under the old policy, we would have probably been required to do the repair. His indication is it's too steep. Uh, he's the one suggesting a better location for the second one. So I don't believe that we have an obligation, we could work with them if we wanted to, um, discontinue use of the first one. But under the policy as it exists now, I believe that the new construction is, is him.
I think the biggest problem is you can't get these narrow little twelve foot wide approaches and things going into fields and coming off a field, like the size of hair seeders that Dugle's about, but hair seeders, like a tank goes behind and everything else. Like, they just can't safely get in there or out of there, so.
It's not, it's the low spot, where that for which is, so it fills with water. And then, like you said, equipment is getting bigger and better, and they can't withhold aid for weeds over and over and over again, and when the moisture's sitting there, I mean, it's not working for them anymore. So where they're proposing it is not that far away, but it's uphill a little bit, so that it won't be wet. And when you come harvest, you get a rain, how are you getting in and out of there with whatever you're bringing in? Whether it's a cedar or a superbeal, you know, that may be impossible. And where the new one's going, it's conveniently located across from another one. Like, on the other side of the road, which will make it easier for Moe, when you have two approaches there together, you can do them both at the same time.
So whether it was the first or second approach, they paid for it.
Yes, with, with the new policy.
All in favor? Whereas pursuant to section three seventy two of the municipal act, a municipality may set a reserve bid in the amount of the tax arrears and costs in respect to the property. Now therefore be resolved that a reserve bid be placed on all properties in amount to all arrears and costs in respect of each property listed for tax sale. Move that, Counselor Hatch, seconder? Counselor McDonald, discretion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, we have workplace safety. Okay. You want to move to that first one, or? Do you have anything you want to add to?
No, simply that we receive it, and taking a look at the race transfer sites, uh, some of the issues that they came up with are things that are already in place, such as, uh, we have to comply, provide evidence that we ensure the fire extinguishes are maintained. Uh, that's done in all of our facilities, it's supposed to be annually, uh, they haven't been out in a while, but they were here actually probably a month ago and realized he didn't have the necessary paperwork, so they will be back. Um, updating the first aid kit. Chelsea has already had the guys who will purchase what they need. The tripping hazard, you're aware that the ramp was damaged, this happens almost annually. Basically, within our maintenance budget of getting it repaired. There is the curb slot, I believe, is what the safety officer noted and said that that was, was good to have, recognizing that you're still gonna get damage from people backing up the fencing. Uh, the working loader in isolation, we've already got a work alone policy. Safety procedures, this is one that we don't have in writing, is a procedure for burning waste. It isn't typically the waste transfer station attendants to do it. It is our public works staff, and we usually have the fire department aware that it is happening, it wouldn't hurt to have that in writing, and that was that, it's a way to turn to the stations.
Why does it say, though, um, burn pit signs should be removed as there is no longer burn pit in the area?
Uh, I do not see that. So we don't, the reason we don't have a burn pit is because it's unsafe and we probably, right? Can't go, um, but it's, it's in her man, um, in the manual that she's not to burn at that location.
And this is in the open?
That's the open.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, generally, we just don't burn ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's a first, right now.
Yeah.
It be resolved that the improvement order from workplace safety and health for the drainage shot be received? Please move that, Counselor, and Counselor McGregor, discretion, further? All in favor? Okay, anyone?
Workplace safety and health for the water treatment plant, a lot of what was indicated is having the that sheets available, having the chemical jugs picked up and disposed of. Uh, the one thing that they do note, um, is the fact that we do have a compliance space, and that we should have a risk assessment done for what that looks like if an employee has to go down it. And if we should also have. Yeah, I mean, there are some of those, um, things that are kind of within our existing budget that we can put in. The other thing that I thought we needed to take a look at. And we had to do implied workspace as well, I think it's a procedure is what it requires. And typically, I know for a fact that Drew does not go down in, in fine space without somebody else in attendance with him, but I think we need to document that.
It be resolved that the improvement order for workplace safety and health for the water treatment facility be received? Please move that? Counselor Jones, seconder? Counselor Hatch, all in favor? Okay, be resolved that this regular meeting now adjourned to an in-camera meeting to discuss a financial matter as per subsection one fifty two, three B three, of the municipal act, all matters discussed in camera conference. We'll discuss that in an open meeting as to section eighty three one D. Please move that? Counselor Phil, second, Counselor McDonald, all in favor? Okay. Grab a coffee. Okay, grab a coffee.
Let's have a.
So be resolved that the sit-camera meeting does now resume back to regular meetings, please move that? Counselor Fisher, seconder? Counselor Jones, all in favor? She's about to go.
Yeah, but we'll wait until they come back soon before we do, thank you.
Okay, so. Yeah. Okay, so be resolved that a new, a new tender be issued for the road plate capping services with modified specifications for turkey ranch, power, and an option for treaty bank road. Please move that? Counselor McGregor, seconder? Counselor Fisher? All in favor? So whereas in August twenty nineteen, council authorized expenditure of up to thousand dollars plus applicable taxes for each staff member or member of council who saw independent legal advice related to harassment, and whereas the amount of harassment and cost of legal advice have both increased, now therefore be resolved that council authorize the expenditure up to three thousand dollars plus applicable taxes for each staff member or member of council who seek independent legal advice related to harassment. Certainly move that? Counselor McDonald, second, Counselor Fisher, all in favor? So be resolved that the administration be directed to prepare relevant materials for council consideration at this August eighteenth council meeting related to the issuance of adventures for upgrades to the water treatment plant, pump and generator. Please move that? Counselor Hatch, seconder? Counselor Fisher, all in favor? So be resolved that administration be instructed to make application for funding for a new public workshop through the Low Carbon Economy Fund whereby billing costs will cost eight hundred thousand dollars. I've mentioned that the G H D emissions through the fuel switching from propane and natural gas to grid supplied electricity and other efficiencies, windows doors and installation be used to support the application. Please move that? Counselor Jones, seconder? Counselor McGregor, all in favor? Jerry. Be resolved that administration be instructed to withhold payment for dust control services due to product quality and or application. Please move that? Counselor Jones, second, Counselor Hatch, all in favor? Opposed? Say? Okay, we're there then?
Yeah.
So be resolved that this meeting is now adjourned, we begin on Friday, August eighteen, twenty twenty three at nine AM. Please move that, Counselor Jones, seconder? Counselor McDonald, all in favor?